This meeting of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange, we will begin with an invocation to be offered by Reverend Pete Shogur of South Crest Church to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, God, we thank you for tonight. God, we thank you for the opportunity we have to meet together, God, to discuss your business. God, because when it comes to people and it comes to the effects on them, it is always your business. God, I pray that you be with our council members. God, you be with our mayor. God, with all of our city managers and officials. God, that you would continue to be with them. God, encourage them. God, let them know what they do is appreciated. God, what they do is matters. God, I pray that you let them to continue to be a positive influence in our community. I thank you for all the work they've done over this past year, as difficult it has been with COVID. And God, I pray as we come out of the pandemic and look to the future, God, that we have great days ahead of us. If you're going to pray these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the infinite justice for all.
Thank you, Pete. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of our regular council meeting held on October 26th. I would entertain a motion.
To approve.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Although it's not on the agenda under recognitions, I think it is appropriate for us to congratulate council members Jim Arrington, Tom Gore, and Nathan Gaskin.
Yay!
On their reelection for another four-year term on the La Grange City Council. I look forward to continue serving with you. And we've got the band together, and we're going to stay together for, as is, for at least another two years until the next election.
So now I'd like to give my victory speech.
Okay. But seriously, congratulations. Excited to have that election behind us, and we can get back to focusing just exclusively on what's best in the city's business. So we're excited to do that. Moving down to delegations, we have delegation. We have Tabitha Coverson with Communities and Schools. Tabitha, always good to see you.
This isn't my normal presentation, so I'm going to be short and sweet and quick as possible. I don't know if you all saw the news report. There was a school out in Louisiana that had all this violence, and the kids were fighting like crazy, and a group of dads got together and they became dads on duty. So, Troup County, we don't have that type of violence or that type of issues, but you know, with what I do, we see, you know, what's going on in the community and in the schools. So I decided, we need to do something like that in Troup County. So we're going to do same thing, dads on duty, but I added another component, moms on a mission. So what I'm looking for are community partners, leaders, all of you, to come out and be a dad on duty or a mom with a mission. You don't have to have kids, but to be, you know, I mean, you don't have to be a parent to be a parent figure. And do you know what it would do to a kid, like, if the mayor gave me a high five when I got off the bus one morning, or told me to have a good day? Or, you know, Councilman Gore said, hey, see, you got on new shoes, anything, you know, have a great day. What are your grades like? We're going to start off slow and kind of small. You know, once school kids get coming off the bus, expand it to maybe having a group of people come and hang out with the kids during lunch, sit down and have lunch with them, you know, have a meal with somebody from the community. Our kids see most people in positions of authority when they get in trouble. You know, our police officers when they're, you know, getting picked up for doing something wrong. But if we're in there encouraging them, and then when they see you in the community, like, hey, he comes to my school and gives me words of encouragement, I'm going to act right in the community. Because you, as an adult, is saying to that kid, I see you. I know that you're here, and I'm here for you. And they respect that. Kids want structure more than anything else in the world, despite how they act or how they, you know, as they call it, buck authority. So that's what I want to talk to you all about. I have some information right here, and this isn't just for you. So when you go to church, or when you go to your other meetings or groups, I want you to spread the word. I want this to be huge. I want it to be that there are so many people doing this, that we can send a group of people to every school in Troup County, you know, at least once or twice a week. I mean, it means, when I saw that on the news, I tried not to watch the news, and I just happened to be at my mom's house, and that story came on, and I was like, okay, God, I hear you. I'm going to do that, too, because we need that, and we need that kind of encouragement for our kids. So I'm going to leave the flyers here, and trust me, I'll be back in the spring to do my own other.
Yeah.
And if there's any questions, I'll hang out until the end of the meeting. If I got any questions right now before I sit down.
No question. Just thank you for this, and thank you for all that you're doing through Community Schools and the community. And certainly, this is something we want to support. And so I will, in addition to distributing it to the council tonight, I'll ask staff to kind of help coordinate with you some days and some time.
Okay.
That some of the senior leadership, the mayor council, the senior staff can do some of these.
I have a question. Tabitha, first of all, I love your program.
Thank you.
It is effective. It works, and I support you 110%. But in keeping with my tradition of dealing with educational issues, I have to ask you this question.
They didn't know, nobody knew I was coming. I was in a meeting with Meg and Katie today.
This was a late add.
It was like last minute.
This was a late add to the agenda.
Like, she just typed my name in there a few minutes while I was sitting back there. Yeah, I wasn't even, I wasn't supposed to be here.
But thank you for all that you do. You guys are fantastic.
You're welcome. And yeah, and I'll send out an email with the information, but I just wanted, you know, put that on your mind. A lot of you I see in the community, Mr. Arrington's my new lunch partner. So, but thank you for considering that.
Thank you, Tab. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council member reports. Do any council members have anything to report tonight?
Other than we have a parade coming up, Mr. Mayor, that would be my report. The lighting of La Grange, District Two, council people are doing that, along with some of the past council and some other elected officials from our community. And this year, we're honoring several people, more than just two. We're honoring several, including, we're honoring the memory of Mr. Richard English and Mrs. English. Honoring their memory.
Very, very proud.
That is on the 19th.
19th.
The 19th. It would be going from the Nile Street Park on Revva Street to Daniel Street, from Daniel Street over to Ware Street, from Ware Street down to Union to Cademet Park. We'll convene that, and the program will begin to light the tree in Cademet Park. And thanks to the city manager and the staff, Sue, they've been, I mean, terrific. Katie, they've been terrific with all the help of getting the word out there and assisting us with the things that we need for that. And so our mayor, we have him on to bring greetings from La Grange. And so we're looking forward for our mayor to do that, and we're inviting all of our council members to be there this year. So thank you so very much.
Sounds great. Thank you, Don Hammonds. Any other reports?
You left out one person that we're excited made the election again this year.
Your son.
Thank you.
We're all grateful for what you do, and you've obviously been doing a great job, and we want to keep you going as long as we can. So glad you got reelected with an overwhelming majority also.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
And I'd like to take this time to thank everybody as well, for my supporters, and thank the city for dealing with me, you know, and asking you to do things like, you know, pick up trash and stuff like that. Just thank you for making this job look easy. Look forward to serving another four years. I'm excited about it. Also want to say, I don't know why, but I do know why, because I think he was a great guy. The passing of Max Cleland kind of, it shook me. I met him one time. He's a great guy, and, but it just seems like all the, all the good, decent politicians are leaving us quickly. You know, people that were gentlemen, and, you know, and Mr. English is right there with him. The passing of these folks, it just, it shakes me, because I look up to them as being good statesmen. And I hope that one day I can achieve that level. But I just, I just have to share that with you all.
Well said. Well said. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Gaskin. Okay, city manager report. Ms. Kelsey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A couple tonight, the financial statements for October, as well as the payment of bills over $2,000 are attached to your agenda material. I don't have particular comments at this time, but I would be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for the city manager about the financials or the bills? Okay.
So I also have a late add to the agenda. Apologize for that, but timing on this has just been hard-pressed. As, as you see my daughter.
It's a good picture.
Oh, yeah.
Lovely.
Sorry. Okay, this worked a few minutes ago. There we go. Sorry. But we have been working diligently, actually, for, I would say, over a year, to bring an apartment complex to downtown La Grange. We've been working in concert with Callaway Foundation, DDA, Smiths here, he's the chair of DDA, as well as a company called EYC out of Charleston and Troup County. So we've got lots of players at the table to try to bring this project to fruition. But I just want to share with you kind of what is our need and why do we need apartments downtown. I think it really takes you back further than the housing market analysis that I showed here on the screen in 2019. If you think back to when the Callaways did the first plan for downtown in 2000, it addressed the need for multifamily and single-family housing in the downtown area. The more recent study that I share with you is the 2019 study, where it kind of talks about three pillars of action for the council to consider, and one was certainly investing in housing in our downtown area, and kind of talked about encouraging mixed use, multifamily, talked about our missing middle that we've talked about. And so this project really, I think, fits right in to addressing a need, especially, I think, for the millennial population, who is looking for these types of residential units that are close to a downtown, where they have restaurants to eat, they have a movie theater, we have lots of, we have a brewery, have lots of things for our young vibrant people to move back into downtown. So this is a conceptual drawing of what the project that we've talked to, this company called EYC, they're out of Charleston, South Carolina. And so they put together this rendering. It's really a two-building project of multifamily with a 4,000-square-foot set of retail. So the units in this would be about 144. There's an MRU attached to your agenda material items that basically spells out what I'm going to kind of briefly cover with you tonight. But it's 144-unit multifamily. It does have 280 parking spaces as a parking garage. 130 of those parking spaces will be leased to DDA, as well as that 4,000-square-feet of retail space that I talked about, that'll be part of that structure. The location of this is the former Lloyds site on Main Street. I'll share with you what that looks like. So if you'll recall there, Lloyds at the bottom. It also encompasses the old Stevens, so all of that would actually be removed to build these units that look like this. So you can see the two buildings with a swimming pool in the middle, and name being on your right, building on your left. That little building on the left, it's kind of red down towards Byronhurst Street, is the leasing office. So that's kind of a bigger picture of what that looks like, with Wild Leaf being to the south, and you can see that on that drawing.
So BOA and Goodyear are going to remain?
Yeah, now, the Goodyear was purchased by the Callaway Foundation. I don't know what their featured intent, but it is not part of this project's scope.
Okay.
And what was the other one you haven't mentioned?
Bank of America.
Bank of America is not part of this project.
But the Callaway Foundation also owns Bank of America.
They do.
And this is going to be four stories.
So this is going to be, we'll go back to this. So this shows you the different levels and the different units on the levels. So the first floor will be parking, the leasing office. So I misspoke when we talked earlier, Mr. Mitchell. This is all going to be on grade, built up off the grade. As we talked to the developer about your question this morning, because we had initially talked about underground, but this is going to be, the first level is going to be on grade, the second level is parking, and the retail space there. And then, as you get to the third, fourth, fifth, sixth levels, so four levels of multifamily units, they have a business center on the third floor and the fifth floor, but you can see how they have a whole array of different square footage products for individuals to look at, where they want to rent. And you can see the breakdown of what that is per floor, and then the total breakdown. They do show 152 units. They emailed me this graph, but I think the minimum they wanted to put in the contract was 144. I think that's probably in case when things start getting laid out, it doesn't exactly go according to their plan on their units. And I think they wanted us to be conservative, with the minimum of the 144. So you can see, that's a breakdown of studio, the S is the studio apartments, one unit, two unit, three unit, four unit type apartments. We kind of look at that. So how is this going to get done? So I do want to kind of point out, this really is an investment of $41.7 million project in downtown La Grange. The net, once you take out the public part of this, is about $37 million. So the Callaway Foundation is going to put $2 million in for that, to help with the construction of the public parking garage, as well as they will transfer the title of the property to DDA. DDA, skip around a little bit, will in turn sell the property to the developer, and they will lease back 4,000-square-foot of retail space, and they'll lease back those 130 parking spaces. And they agreed to pay up to $3,000 on maintenance for those parking per year. And they have a 99-year lease agreement, and they're going to pay them $400,000 for that lease. In turn, when they sell it to developer, the developer is going to pay them that $500,000. So it's really a net to DDA of $100,000. But DDA will have to spend a lot of money to bring that shell back up to usable retail space. So they're really not making any money, and the investment Skip can probably speak better to that than I can. Troup County has also pitched in with a tax absorption schedule, which will be based on actual performance and annual return. It's a 10-year schedule to help reduce the cost of the tax burden for the developer. And the city of La Grange has been asked to also help with the parking gar, the public parking garage. We would provide a million dollars to DDA for that. We would also have been requested to provide the street skate on the sidewalks that will be adjacent to the project, and we will also accept a portion of the dirt from the site, should they choose to bring it out to the city landfill. We certainly can use that dirt. So that's kind of the deal, and that's what the MOU is. And I don't know if Skip wants to add anything to that. We also will have control and be intimately involved in the conceptual, how this thing's going to lay out, what it's going to look like. And Skip's already been at the table in numerous meetings to make sure that this conforms to the architecture of our downtown, and that it fits into that mold and it looks appropriate. But I think, you know, as your city manager, this is a huge investment in our downtown. I think it will really change what our downtown can be in terms of bringing this population into downtown. You've already identified the need for housing in our community. I think Scott can probably go on all day about how much housing we need and how far behind we are. And his new announcement he's going to talk about tonight is definitely going to need housing for that, too. So that's very exciting. So at this point, we do have this MOU. The developer needs to have control of the property, I understand, by the end of the year, to make this project happen. So that's kind of the need to move forward if the council is willing to do this. So I would just need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like the motion to proceed.
Second. I have a motion and a second to proceed with the MOU. Ms. Kelsey, a couple of questions. So, so if I understand you correctly, after you account for the public investment, the city, the county, the DDA, and Callaway Foundation, calling that public, you're talking about a private developer investing 37, over $37 million in downtown La Grange. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So after you're backing all that out, we're talking about a private investment of $37 million?
Based on the performance that was presented today.
With approximately 150 apartments, understand, give or take a, give or take a few. And is it, is it your understanding that this has been approved by the DLDA?
They did that today, and I think Skip can address that.
Well, Councilman McCamey is a board member, and he is...
Please, may I say, council, city manager, the DLDA board approved the MOU today at their 2 o'clock meeting. And so we're ready to go, as everybody else is. This is a great, great thing for our community in downtown. So we're all for it.
And can we confirm that the Callaway Foundation and the county have also approved? Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding. And I did ask if the developer had signed that this morning, and Trip did confirm that the developer has signed the agreement, which was what I was kind of waiting on, to present to you, that everything was in place and ready for you to consider.
And I also followed a conversation with Trip this afternoon, and the trustees have also approved this agreement from the Callaway Foundation.
Okay. Great. Okay, thank you for that. Okay.
Question. Question. This is in District Two, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Because I noticed that in their presentation, that wasn't mentioned. However, I know when it gets written up in the paper, they may want to include that. There were, there have been a lot of comments about development in District Two, and I want the public to be aware that this is District Two. The Callaway Foundation is making a significant investment in District Two, as well as, when you say you have an intimate relationship in the development of this project, I'd like to, I know it's going to be done by a private developer, but are they going to have to adhere to the same rules as, as the city if we were developing something? In other words, the hiring of minority contractors, et cetera, et cetera?
I'm not sure that is the case. I can certainly inquire as to...
You know, I'm not trying to stall anything. I'm not trying to hold this up. It's wonderful. It's beautiful. I'd love, I'd love for this to take place, but I need the public to know that they need to participate in this development.
Well, but so, so I think to clarify, I think that to the extent that the city is a partner to the contract, it would be subjected to our nondiscrimination ordinance.
Right.
Because that does reach any contracts that the city's a part of.
Okay.
That doesn't require, it's not an affirmative obligation to, but to hire minority contractors, but it is a nondiscrimination requirement as part of our nondiscrimination ordinance.
And I will have that conversation with the EYC company.
Please do, because I just want to make sure that...
I just want to make sure that technical distinction.
I know that they have a construction company that they work with out of Birmingham, Alabama, and I'll do some inquiries to minority contractors.
I just want people to know that there's opportunities all over the city, and if they have the talent and the skill, I urge them to come forward and take part if you can. That's all.
Yeah.
I got one question that came to mind after you said six stories that I didn't ask this morning. The fire department, ladder trucks, all that reaches. We don't have any issues where we got to buy a ladder truck or anything. Is that correct?
That's not...
Yeah, the hospital, the hospital's six stories, and Great Wolf is seven, actually.
Yeah.
The Great Wolf Hotel Tower.
I think we can handle it to 10 stories, to be honest with you.
Yep, that should be right.
I have a question for Ms. Kelsey. What do we know about the developer? Where have they done similar projects or other projects?
They actually built Woodland Trail. It's out on Davis Bypass, adjacent to Gardner Newman School. They did, they did build those apartment complexes. That was probably our last apartment complex built before the market crash. They have built units in Charleston that they've kind of shared the example of what those look like with us. They've built all across the southeast. They're based out of Charleston, but they have a lot of development in Alabama. I looked online today, and I had in the past, just to refresh my memory today, about some of the units they build. They build lots of multifamily, high-quality, from the pictures that I've shown online. I think the Callaway Foundation actually went to Charleston and did tours and looked at a lot of the development early on in the process.
And correct me if I'm wrong, because I could be wrong, but, but, but I believe that the, the plan, the basic two-building plan that they sort of pitched is base, is modeled after a development they did in Charleston. Is that right?
That's correct. It's similar.
It's similar.
It's similar. It's similar.
Kind of similar style and layout is what I was, is what I was told, I think. Is that accurate?
Similar, but it's been enhanced and a little larger.
Okay.
Very similar units. And one nice thing about it is, these are very, not modest, I mean, they're very generous units. They're 1,027 square feet average per unit. So these are not all studio. These are one, two-bedroom, just a few studio apartments. And these are , to be nice. If you do the calculations, technically, there's 216 bedrooms being built in our downtown, because all two, three-bedroom units are built. So I mean, this is, this is a game changer for our downtown.
Skip, a question about that similar development in Charleston. Do we know how long it's been there and what the track record of it has been?
The one that we're referring to is what they call 17 South in Charleston. You can look up online. But the difference between it and this development is the floor plan layout is pretty much very similar, but it doesn't, it's not built on a structure, parking structure. In other words, it has surface parking lots, but the building designs are very similar to what they're proposed to do. And we've even asked for more masonry on the buildings to go downtown La Grange, to let those show.
I think the, you know, the, I trust everybody involved to make this the best that it could be. But what I'm, what I'm sitting here thinking is, what is the best-case scenario? What's the worst-case scenario? Would anyone like to comment on that?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I follow.
Well, let's take the best case. Skip can probably tell us that, or Scott can tell us that. We'll have 220 bedrooms filled by people who might work in our area, might work in some of our new industries, would interact with the downtown restaurants, everything, contribute to our tax base and so forth. And you would, you would think that type of clientele would be generally well-behaved and cooperative with all of our city in every way. So what's, what's the worst case? Say, like the old statement, you know, build it and they will come. Are we, are we really large enough to fill up that many apartments of that caliber? And Scott may know the answer to that better than I, but just say, what if we, what if you don't? What if the development has 20% occupancy for 10 years? You know, that's not a, that's not a good, the ending on that is not a good ending. What happens then? Somebody sells it, and they fill up the apartments with whoever they can get in there at a much lower price, just to fill up the apartments. Might not be the same scenario as the best case. So I'm thinking of both sides. I'm not trying to be negative, but I'm just trying to think, what's the best case? What's the worst case? Six-story structure in downtown La Grange. And if it was the worst case, where would that lead us?
I have an opinion as to what. It's going to require more police downtown, for sure.
Because there are more people.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, well, there's certainly no guarantee of the outcome, but that's true of anything. I mean, there's no guarantee of, that the courtyard by Marriott would have been successful, or that Great Wolf would have been successful, or that-
The loss, I'm thinking about the loss.
Or the loss. There's no, there's no guarantee.
I never thought they would-
There's no guarantee that anything will be successful. I mean, I think the, the, the best security you've got is that a private developer's putting thirty-seven million dollars in the deal. I mean, no one's going to put thirty-seven million dollars in a deal unless they think it's going to be successful.
And the way I look at it is, like this, the apartments that they're building around town, before they get them built, they're already-
Right.
Already leased out.
Councilman Gore, I would tell you it's a supply and demand thing, and we're, I can assure you, and we talked about it with the mayor, you know, three years ago, we're probably still three thousand units short of what we need in this community. The last two properties that have been built, which has been about a sixty-million-dollar investment, seventy-million-dollar investment, rents have gone up an average of thirty percent across those, and once again, because of supply and demand initiative. Announcement yesterday doesn't make that go down. We're still short probably two thousand jobs that need to be filled, you know, and particularly folks that live in multifamily, folks that aren't going to drive forty-five minutes for our jobs, which is why it's absolutely critical. And I think, having just got back from San Diego, looking at housing options and what's going on out there, which traditionally comes here, we're still ten years behind looking at, you know, traditional garden-style apartments, but these downtown apartments in high-rise is exactly what the young millennials are looking for, and think it's absolutely a perfect fit for the jobs that we're bringing in as well.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
No, I just, I just want to, Dr. Gore, rest assured that the success or failure of all of these endeavors is on our shoulders. If we want it to be successful, it will be successful. I have that much confidence in all of you guys. I really do.
Any other comments?
I just say I'm excited about something coming to downtown. I think it's very needed. You know, and the city's not getting larger, so we're going to have to build, we're going to, you know, figure out how to build and include more housing in the same footage that we got.
Our electrical footprint's not getting any bigger.
So, I'm excited about it, and I think it's a great deal, and like you said, you know, a private investor with thirty-seven million in our downtown says a lot about it.
I'm excited about it because I know, we've been trying to figure out ways to get transportation in LaGrange, and the main question comes with rooftops. We've been trying to figure out how, how to get retail in LaGrange. Same thing comes up, rooftops, more people, and so this will bring in more people. I think it's a win-win situation, I really do. And I certainly know that Noonan and Opalaka has gotten a lot of our people that's worked at Kia and some of the other plants and even the hospitals around here, because we did not have sufficient housing and apartments. That, that's the main thing that they've been looking for, what I talk to people about. So, I'm excited about it. As people who's building Kia, things say, well, what if Kia falls down? Well, it could be a prison, you know? But I passed by the other day, and they're building more onto Kia, so it's, it's moving.
Yeah.
One other question is, who would, who would control the retail? Would that be DOD?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the MOU. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. We, anything else, Ms. Kelsey?
No, sir, that completes that report.
Okay. Moving on to resolutions, we have a resolution declaring playground equipment as surplus.
Yes, sir. As we move forward with the playground renovation at Granger Park, there's a list of items attached to your agenda to declare surplus and place on gov deals to sell.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We do not have any first readings. We have three second readings. The first is an ordinance amending the alcoholic beverages ordinance, requiring applicants to demonstrate compliance with distance requirements.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the alcoholic beverages ordinance to require an applicant to demonstrate compliance with distance requirements, to provide a uniform method of measurement for distance prohibitions, to conform distance requirements with state law, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have a second reading amending the sidewalk cafes ordinance to authorize the use of additional equipment and furnishings.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the sidewalk cafe ordinance to authorize the use of additional equipment and furnishings in conjunction with the sidewalk cafe, if approved with the city manager, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And then we have a ordinance modifying the deposit for fire hydrant meter use.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the code in order to modify the deposit for a meter and backflow device in conjunction with fire hydrant use, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Soon as you get it. Is there a second?
Oh, I wonder who she got on that.
Ah, I got several motions and several seconds. I'm guessing this one's going to get approved. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
Make sure they pay for their water.
Huh? That's right. No free water in LaGrange. Okay, closing comments. We will turn to Ms. Van Sure, and I think she's going to-
I'm going to yield the floor to our president, CEO, Scott Malone, from the Development Authority. He has some very good news.
Let's all welcome Scott.
Lord knows me being in between you and leaving this room, right? First of all, I'd say that I think many of y'all know my brilliant partner, who's Kelly Bush. What you don't know is she is a martial, a mixed martial arts specialist in jiu-jitsu and taekwondo, and she's in, teaching a class in taekwondo in Noonan tonight, so otherwise she would be here, because she's been absolutely critical to this, this process. But I'd also tell you that, you know, as we talk about the news with Remington and their announcement yesterday that leadership matters, so thank you. I'd say not only leadership, but consistency of leadership, which you guys have shown, that really makes a big difference, I think, when we look at these projects. The other thing I'd say is that relationships matter. Y'all know about Project Greenfield, you know, that's been an ongoing project for a long period of time, almost two years now. What you don't know is their legal counsel approached Kelly and I a year ago to the day, yesterday, with the Remington project. And so, while he was legal counsel for Greenfield, he had been retained by Remington to, to find a location for this project, and he came to us and said, I love LaGrange, we love Georgia, can you help us figure out how to get it to Georgia? And so, that was a year ago to the day yesterday, and the announcement was yesterday, which is pretty ironic. It is an exciting project. I mean, it's a big deal. Obviously, I think the mayor, and y'all all well know, that Governor Kemp is beside himself, excited about this project, and as such, committed a significant amount of grant funds for this project to get them to come to Georgia, and they're here. You know, I'll give you a little bit of background, just so you'll know, so we're all on the kind of same page. This project's ongoing, you know, but they've obviously executed the state MOU and the state performance accountability agreement. We haven't finished the MOU for the community because our commitment hasn't yet had to come to fruition with regard to where the final location will be. They've committed to LaGrange, Troup County, but LaGrange, and we have several sites for them when they get to the point of figuring out where they're going to build their, their facilities long-term, but it was really critical for them that they got up and running very, very fast. Y'all know what the issues are in the Northeast. You've seen companies continue to flee the Northeast because of the laws that are associated up there, certainly not gun-friendly states. You saw Smith &amp; Wesson announce in Tennessee just a few weeks ago, and now Remington announcing here. So, they're, they're going into a temporary facility that they've leased for several years. Their most important part of that is R&amp;D, which you saw in the announcement. They'll have a state-of-the-art R&amp;D facility. They are still number one in market share in guns. A big portion of theirs is in shotguns for the police force. I'm happy to say that Chief Deckmeyer's met Ken Darcy, the CEO, and their team, and, and our police force also uses Remington shotguns, which they have eighty-one percent market share. And so, it's really, really a big deal. They'll get up and running pretty quickly. Kelly's been working, she has the, you know, the bat phone to the CEO and the chief operating officer, who will be in town Thursday, really ramping up, bringing the contractors in to start getting the building, building ready for them. Their, their goal is to be up and running in this facility by late first quarter, so pretty aggressive timeline. It'll take them two to three years to, to figure out, you know, get ramped up. They can't go more than two hundred employees in that facility, and their commitment is to eight-hundred-and-fifty-six employees over sixty months. And so, they'll very quickly start that process once they get the construction, the renovations going on in this existing facility, to finalize the location of where they want to be long-term. I, I know the mayor and Meg in particular know some of the locations they're talking about, but their, their property that we have under control, which is what's allowed them to go ahead and announce, so they're not being held hostage to, you know, real estate as we go forward. So, very, very exciting. I can't thank the mayor and Meg enough for their continued support on this project. They've known from the beginning, and I know y'all have continued to give them support. So, very, very exciting project. We're excited about it, and certainly answer any questions you may have, you know, as we go forward.
Well, thank you, Scott, and thank you for all of your hard work, and Kelly, and everybody on the staff who's pulled together to make this happen, and, and congratulations. It really is, it's a great win for LaGrange, it's a great win for Georgia, and, you know, there's still more work to do, obviously, getting them up and running and getting them up to full capacity, but we have some time to do that, you know, and, but it's really, it's really a nice new brand coming to the community. So, thank you for that. Questions or comments for Scott?
Just one comment. You know, I appreciate your, your shoot-for-the-moon approach, and I think you, I think you hit the target this time. No pun intended, but it'd be good for the newspaper.
I had one, one question, Scott.
Yes, sir.
In some of the information, it said advanced manufacturing facility. Can you discuss that a little bit?
Yeah, so at the end of the day, they're a metal operation, right? I mean, it's a, they're assembling, you know, the guns here, but their operation is all CNC machines, which are state-of-the-art technology, all automated, very similar to almost all of our, our manufacturing partners here in Troup County. So, they're an absolute perfect fit for everything we do with the skill sets we already have in place. You know, and then the other piece of that, I think, that really separates what they're trying to do is the R&amp;D piece. That's really what separates them, and having that whole executive team for what they do with R&amp;D is really what the CEO has said is most critical to their operations going forward. You know, I'd, I'd like to also say, y'all's decision in supporting the project downtown is absolutely critical. The mayor knows, and Meg certainly know that we've, you know, we've been talking about housing for four years, knew this, this, you know, dilemma was coming upon us, but y'all have really stepped up to the plate with your twenty-seven-million-dollar bond in sewer in March. That's the number-one driver to the developers coming in. They can't come in without that. I would continue to encourage you to support everything that we can do to help get the housing in place, because not only for the, you know, the companies that we're bringing in, and we have several more coming down the pipe, but for our existing industry here that's today, that's struggling with finding particularly entry-level workforce. We can get skilled labor pretty, pretty easily, but it's that entry-level workforce that can't drive forty-five minutes to come to a great job, so they need the housing options in place to be able to do what they need to do, and I think the decisions y'all are making are incredibly wise, incredibly important, and be critical to the future of the success of our community.
So, you, you have all these different options of where they might build?
We have several. We've locked in on several, yeah.
Okay. How many of those are in District Two?
I think-
Every one of them.
Okay. I just want to reflect that for the newspaper as well.
And one more question, Scott.
Yes, sir.
Research and development, is that like a testing facility, or what, what does that actually mean?
So, they, they will, fortunately for us, Kelly worked out with the governor, we have a state-of-the-art shooting range up off Moody Bridge Road through the Department of Natural Resources. And if you want to know the truth, that was really a critical factor when they came to town initially and looking. They go, okay, y'all have not been able to stump us on one thing, but now we want to see your shooting range. And I have to admit, I'd never been to it. I have a farm, so I shoot out in the country myself, and I called Joel Upchurch, and I said, where exactly is that shooting range we have? And he goes, I promise you, it's better than anything, any company you could talk to has. We drove up to that shooting range off Moody Bridge Road, and we pulled up, and they were like, you have got to be kidding me. And so, there was nobody there, and I don't know if you've seen the facility up off, you know, Moody Bridge Road, but it is outstanding. And they're not open on Mondays, and so the governor has got in the Department of Natural Resources to dedicate that facility to Remington on Mondays, where they can do all their, there'll be no shooting in the facilities in the city of LaGrange. All of that will occur, you know, at the facilities up off Moody Bridge Road. And the other thing that people have asked, will there be any ammunition? There's no ammunition. This is the most highly regulated industry in the U.S., and, and so they, they, ammunition's nowhere near, you know, the facility itself. I will add that they are also a defense contractor, so they make, they make pistols for the military. They will not do that in the initial facility. They will do, they'll do that when they build the, the future facility going forward.
So, this is a, this is not a munitions depot. It is strictly an arms manufacturer.
It's a assembly operation for, for shotguns and rifles.
Awesome.
Any other questions or comments for Scott?
About as brief as I can be.
Huh? That was great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, with that, we stand adjourned.